To the flag of the United States of America.
Could I get a roll call, please?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Mister Stevens?
Here.
Here.
Okay, um, thank you everyone for joining this evening. Sorry we were a couple minutes late. We had to do a executive session with the school board. And so we are, uh, we had to, uh, do talk about personnel matters and office, uh, issues. And so, uh, again, apologize for the delay for that. Um, we do have our school board agenda in front of you. We have a couple of recognitions this evening. The first one we'd like to start with, though, is a recognition and a bit where a minute of one of our former employees who happened to be a coach. Uh, so I'll take a moment and just read this. Whereas the board of directors of the Brandywine Heights Area School District acknowledges the passing of your friend in education, Mister Joseph Stess, on January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas Joseph Steph served the district with dedication and excellence as a high school track and field coach. And from March first, two thousand twenty-one through June fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and he was a longtime assistant football coach. And whereas Jos- Joseph Steph's dedication, devotion, and care he shared with all the students, he impacted both on and off the field, will long be remembered and appreciated. And whereas Joseph Steph served as a United States Marine Corps Staff Sergeant, for five fours of duty for those in combat in Iraq and Afghanistan. And whereas his market is past, is marked by a deep sense of loss to his family and friends in the district. And whereas the Brandywine Heights Area School Board would like to publicly recognize the extra nor- extraordinary life and record the service of Joseph Stess. Now therefore being resolved, that the school board of the Brandywine Heights Area School District officially honor Mister Joseph Steph for his role in improving the lives of countless students and citizens through his contribution to education, public, and military service, his family, and the community. And be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this school district this sixth day of February, two thousand twenty-three, that a copy sent to his brief table. We can just take a moment of silence, please, in remembrance of Mister Stess. Thank you. So, uh, this evening we have the honor to recognize two staff members. We do something called a New Heights Award, uh, every month, and we recognize two staff members during the New Heights Awards. This evening we have the opportunity to re- recognize, uh, Mrs. Gina Hook as well as, as well as, uh, Mrs. Rita Kehart. So Gina, I'll have you come up here first. Mister Riddians will have you join. And so I'll just take a moment and read why Gina was recognized in the New Heights Awards she received. Mrs. Hook has gone above and beyond to challenge and build confidence in her fourth graders. She also has an excellent communication with parents. And I know Mister, uh, Riddians has a lot to add. Yes, it is a testament, uh, to Mrs. Hook because she's been out there by her. So what did that say? That says that you have students going home saying, oh my gosh, Mrs. Hook's class is amazing. I love Mrs. Hook. Right? So to me, that speaks volumes. I think in a lot of ways to describe Mrs. Hook, one, she's very empathetic. She's greatly connecting with her students, getting to know them on a personal level. That way she can provide that individualized attention that these kiddo need so that they strive, you know, to be the best they can be. Another thing tonight I heard her say, you know what? I gotta keep creating all these really great lessons. You know what? It's really hard, but I'm doing it for the kids. She creates such engaging lessons that the kids are always coming to class excited right away. So that's something that she does really well. And she shows great commitment and dedication to all the students and all the kids. So we thank you. We appreciate your efforts. We appreciate your honesty. Uh, next up, Rita. Come on up here, Rita Kehart. So Rita is one of our power professionals, longtime power professionals with us. Uh, she, I think, received the most New Heights Awards in one month that anyone has ever received. She received seven, her entire team, uh, in fifth grade that she worked with, all nominated. So I'm not gonna read all seven, but I will read, uh, bits and pieces. Um, Rita has a, has been a fantastic partner in the fifth grade team for years. She shows nothing but patience and empathy for the students that she works with. She's a valuable asset to the district and is a wonderful person. Goes on, she goes above and beyond. She is such a positive influence on her classroom. She is absolutely irreplaceable. When Mrs. Kehart is working with students, she treats them with complete respect and keeps calm even when the students are difficult and testing their limits. So that is it. Students and each, students and others look at Mrs. Kehart as a kind, caring, and dedicated member to our teaching team. Rita is a hardworking parent professional at Brandywine Heights Middle School. Rita, Rita rarely misses a day of work and is always offer, is always willing to offer whatever she, she can. Rita has a positive relationship with students. They look for her for assistance and someone to talk to. In fact, many students in older grades still stop by to say hi to her. Rita has a strong understanding of what works with certain students. She is, she's certain, she continually is seeking strategies to help the students become successful in math. Mrs. Kehart treats the students with respect and a caring nature. A classroom cannot function successfully without her help. She is irreplaceable. And finally, Rita is a valuable member of our team and is more than deserving of the New Heights Award. Huge congratulations to Rita.
I'd also just like to, uh, acknowledge the fact, uh, that you've been a valuable asset to this district. Uh, I tried to figure out how many years you've been here. I've known you since, um, your son has come to the school, so it's been a long time. Um, but she also takes, uh, charge of the sweet program for our summer work, um, education assistant program for our students. And she goes to mom and jock and making sure that she's managing that, helping the students guide them when going to the school that they need to, or prepare for in order to end the course course. So thank you for all the talents and her here.
Two wonderful, uh, staff members, wonderful recognitions, and, uh, Rita's keen to join this evening, uh, with her husband as well as her neighbor. Next up on the, uh, recognition, before we get started in the agenda, we have two recognitions. Uh, these are wonderful acknowledgements. The first one is an acknowledgement from Saint Luke's. Saint Luke's is our partner for our, uh, as our physician for the school as well as, um, our athletic trainer partner. Uh, and as part of that process, uh, they donate money every year to the school district. And this is a five thousand dollar sponsorship for the school district from Saint Luke's. So a huge thank you to Saint Luke's, uh, for that sponsorship. Uh, and then secondly, uh, we, this year we started a Brandywine Heights rifle team. Uh, and as part of that budget process, and we talked about that at the beginning, we talked about going out and getting donations from the community. I am, uh, proud to share that, uh, we had over fifteen thousand dollars in donations to get the rifle team started this year. So a huge thank you to all those sponsors from, uh, local gun clubs to, uh, companies, to individual, uh, companies within the community, uh, as well as broader companies like Cabela's and Taxi Supply, uh, to just individuals that personally gave. So a huge thank you to, to all those on that list that have contributed to help that, get that team started. Finally, we will turn it over to our student reps. Who's starting with, uh, you wanna start with the elementary or high school today? Elementary? Alright, here's the one elementary. That's all yours.
Kindergarten registration is open. As of January thirty-first, there are twenty-seven students registered for next school year. On February first, the elementary school and intermediate school students partnered up for World Read Loud Day. Pre-K and kindergarten partnered Red with third grade, second grade partnered with fifth grade, and first grade partnered with fourth grade. They prepared for this event by picking library books ahead of time and practicing reading them to share with their new partners. New friendships were formed. The elementary school is celebrating kindness week next week. They will have a spirit week with kindness activities for each day. On Friday, February seventeenth, high school students will lead an activity with the elementary school. They will read a book about kindness and have students trace their hands and write an act of kindness on the hand. They'll use that to make a colorful, school-wide mural display in the cafeteria. In the intermediate school, February first was World Read Loud Day. Fourth graders visited first grade, second graders visited fifth grade. The students had fun celebrating the power of reading and connecting with one another. PTC will be having a dining fundraiser on Wednesday, February eighth. They are doing a pop-up fundraiser with Takira Kamali located in West Reading. You can preorder your meals through Tuesday, February seventh, and then pick them up on Wednesday, February eighth in the elementary school parking lot from five thirty to five forty-five P M. Fourth and fifth grade classes will be having mini Valentine's Day celebrations. And finally, February is Random Acts of Kindness Week. They will be celebrating it all month long. It is a time for students to see all of the ways that we can become a positive influence in each other's lives. In the middle school, yearbook sales began today and will go until February thirteenth. Student council has been making handmade blankets and dog beds and will donate them to Hafsvil Pet Sanctuary. IS and MS will have a Super Bowl Spirit Day on February tenth. The eighth graders will be scheduling their ninth grade courses on February ninth. Midterm for the third marking period is on February fifteenth. And the Spirit Week for IS and MS, Monday, February thirteenth is Jersey Day. Tuesday, Red and Pink Day. Wednesday, Wacky Tacky Day, Dress in Crazy Misch- Mismatched Colors. And on Thursday, February sixteenth, Color Wars, fourth grade wears blue, fifth grade wears black, sixth grade wears gray, seventh white, and eighth maroon. And then on Friday, February seventeenth, Pajama Pants Day.
Next week is Valentine's Spirit Week at the high school. Monday, the thirteenth is Wear Black for Anti-Valentine's Day. The fourteenth is Spotlight Day, Wear Red If You're Taken, Green If You're Single, and Yellow If It's Complicated. Wednesday, the fifteenth is Wear Pink Because on Wednesdays We Wear Pink. The sixteenth is Show Some Love For Your Favorite Pajamas. And Friday, the seventeenth, is Salad Dressing Day. The seniors are ranch dressing, the juniors are Thousand Island dressing, the sophomores are Caesar dressing, and the freshmen are house dressing. Friday, the seventeenth, is also an early dismissal, and students will have a long weekend and off on Monday, February twentieth. High school students from the Avidum Club, which is a suicide prevention and mental health awareness club, will join the elementary students for activities on February seventeenth for World Kindness Week. Evening of the Arts will be held on the twenty-fourth of February at seven P M with performances by jazz band, choir, juggling club, and drama club, with art projects by the various art classes and art club displayed in the matinee. The BH Clothing Circle had their largest turnout for a distribution event on January twenty-eighth with fifty-seven families in attendance. And their next event will be a clothing collection on February twenty-fifth from twelve A M, for, from ten A M to twelve P M outside the high school. An adjust induction will be February twenty-seventh. Drama Club is taking a trip to Walnut Street Theater to view a professional performance of Cat on a Hot Tin Roof on March second. And the Snow Coming Winter Semi Formal Dance will be on March third. In athletics, tomorrow night is senior night for boys' basketball with a very important theme. Spectators are encouraged to wear purple to support suicide prevention awareness and to donate to the Avidum Club, a Brandywine Heights Club which provides support and information for mental hair, for mental health awareness to all students. Cheer Senior Night and Youth Night is also tomorrow during the Avidum and Suicide Prevention Game. The student bocce team won the students versus teachers game today, and I quote, "Double double golden bonus overtime," which was a term generously pr- provided by Mister Ginnich. Girls' basketball will definitely qualify for county playoffs and potentially for the district playoffs. Boys' basketball qualifies for district playoffs. The boys' wrestling team, uh, wrestles in sectionals next weekend at Central Dolphin East. And girls' wrestling competes in the North Penn Tournament Saturday the eleventh, at the Penn Manor Wrestling Tournament Sunday the nineteenth, and at the Regional Tournament Sunday, March fifth.
Thank you.
Mister Wagman, I have just a quick follow-up question on the, um, donation from Saint Luke's, the five thousand dollar donation. Mister Potter, has that been earmarked for a particular purpose that you could share?
Um, I actually am not sure what that purpose is. I will find out though. Um, I believe something, I know it's something connected to athletics, but it might exactly be short. Sarah, do you know off the top of your head, did you mark for the Saint Luke's?
Uh, some of the money will be going to purchase, uh, for all of our teams to use, specifically chocolate field. Um, and then the rest of the money, um,
Ladies, thank you so much for your report. Uh, love the kindness connection. I know we're gonna talk about that a little bit later, so I'll just steal a little moment now. Um, so we have high school students that are going down to the elementary, right? And they're gonna make like a kindness tree with hands and then make, I think what I understand, two of them, because then one's gonna be carried up to the, uh, high school as well, if I'm not mistaken. So, some exciting things there to connect the high school students with, with our elementary students and, and have it as we focus on the kindness this month as a theme. Good job. And then we also are recognizing and creating the, um, clothing drive club tonight, so that'll be official then after the night. Yep. Thank you for being started, and good luck on the twenty-fifth.
Alright, so moving on, uh, we have our first presentation of the evening, um, from Gorman and Associates. There are local auditors. Uh, I wanna introduce Hank.
So my name's Hank Miller. Uh, I was the engagement partner for the financial audit this year. Uh, unfortunately Beau got sick by his kids. They were passing something around, so he wasn't able to make it out tonight. Um, but I just wanna go through, uh, different elements in the report. Um, I don't see the reports directly in front of you, but, okay. So I'll just go through the different elements, um, in the report and sort of what our responsibility is. Um, in the first section of the report, we have our letter to management. So in here, this is basically our correspondence to the board and to management regarding any findings, issues, updates that would, that might be coming down the pike as far as governmental accounting standards that could impact, um, the business office and, and financial reporting. Um, so I just wanna report that we did not have, or the district did not have any significant deficiencies um, or material weaknesses in the audit. The next report, or next letter in the report, I should say, is our independent auditor's report. So this is where we basically give our opinion on the financial statements. And so I'd just like to read a, an excerpt. Um, in here we state, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Brandywine Heights Area School District as of June thirty, twenty-twenty-two, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable cash flows are of for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles, generally except the United States of America. So all of that basically to say that you guys have an unmodified or a clean opinion. So what does that mean? That means the financial statements as are presented in this report, um, are free from any material statements that you can rely on them, uh, for making judgments and making decisions. And if, and it, it gives you additional assurance just that, uh, third party, outside party, Gorman and Associates reviewed the numbers, and it's not just coming directly from management. So after the independent orders report, you would have management's discussion analysis. So this section is written by management. It is not audited by us, but we will read through it just to make sure that there's no, you know, false statements or an, any misleading statements, anything of that nature in there. After the management, the MBNA as we call it, we have the basic financial statements. Let's start on page twenty-three. Now the one report, I would just, I'll just mention briefly. It's at the very end of this section on page thirty-five. We have the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Uh, this is a comparison of your budget versus your actual. In this report, you'll see, uh, there's two columns for the budget. You have your original budget and then the final budget after all the budget transfers, uh, for, after the audit. And that's shown in comparison to the actual results for the year. And so for the general funds, for twenty-twenty-two, you landed with a, any fund balance at June thirty of ten million, three hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So and then the next section we have is the notes to the financial statements. This section is required by accounting standards, and this basically just gives a general description of the district's operations and governance. They also explain in more detail certain line items found in the financial statements and how they are derived. Um, and hopefully this section will give you, uh, more insight beyond just the numbers. After the notes to the basic financial statements, we have the required supplemental information section. This just includes schedules for your pension and OPEB liabilities. And after those schedules, there are notes that correspond with those schedules as well. Then we have our supplemental information, information section. This is not required, uh, but this is information that we like to provide that we think, uh, can be a little bit more useful. Um, and basically just gives you more detailed reports of revenues and expenditures, uh, for each fund type. Um, again, along with a few other schedules that we think are relevant. The last section of the report is the single audit section. And this starts on page one oh six. Let's turn it quick. The very first schedule in this section, it's called the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. So because the district expended more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards, you're required to have a compliance audit or a single audit. Um, and basically what happens is we go through all the programs that the school, uh, current is operating. And through a various set of criteria will determine which programs need to be audited, uh, per federal guidelines. This year, uh, we tested the Education Stabilization Fund, which is your ESER and ARP funds. So we've reviewed those grants, um, to make sure that the school was in compliance, uh, in administering those funds. So with this CIPA, we also do present notes, um, to the CIPA as well, just giving a little bit further explanation. After that, we have our independent orders report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on the audit of the financial statements performed in acco- in accordance with government auditing standards. So because you receive federal dollars, you're required to follow the rules of government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. Basically, we just look at internal control over financial reporting, compliance with applicable laws and other matters. We had no instances of non-compliance or anything to report in this section. And then also I just wanna mention that, uh, there were no findings as far as the single audit around the, the Education Stabilization Fund. And that, oh, I did one. So I did have a handout for you guys. Everyone should have the financial highlights. Just two quick pages. So here basically just gave a real, uh, high-level view of what happened, uh, for June thirty, twenty-twenty-two for the fiscal year. The first schedule you'll see is the general fund budget versus actual, just showing you in total revenues, expenditures, actual versus the final budget and what the variance was. So for, for twenty-twenty-two, you had an, uh, net surplus of one point three million dollars, giving you any fund balance of ten point three million dollars. And then below that, uh, we basically have a breakdown of your fund balance and how that fund balance is allocated, uh, moving forward. So we have non-spendable fund balance that just represents, uh, certain items that are available, but you can't necessarily spend such as prepaid expenditures. Um, you have restricted fund balance. Uh, the board had committed fund balance for, uh, Pizer's rate stabilization, basically because retirement rates have been increasing dramatically over the years, uh, schools have committed fund balances sort of offset some of those fu- future costs that are, were a little bit unpredictable. Does seem like it's starting to stabilize a little bit more now. And so the board has one point five million committed for that. And then various other assignments, uh, which is done at the management level. On the second page, uh, we provided a, a trend analysis for the food service funds. And we decided to do this over four years just because of the impact of COVID, starting in twenty twenty and twenty-twenty-one. Um, just so you can sort of see how the operating revenues, expenses, and the food service fund, um, have been effective over the, over the years. At the bottom of that schedule, you'll see there's, uh, adjustments related to Pizer's and OPEB liability. These are basically accounting entry, like if you just look at the financial statements for the food service funds, there's gonna be pension and OPEB adjun- adjustments in there. And those can, because they're based on interest rates, those can vary year to year based on the market. Um, so what we do here is just back those out at the bottom, so you can sort of have a bottom line, try and smooth those numbers out a little bit to, to show what the actual results have been over the years. And just to give a little bit of explanation here, so you would see here in the last few years, you do have a much higher profit or surplus in the food service funds. Um, in twenty-twenty-one, there's a large capital contribution that can be attributed for much of that. Twenty-twenty-two, you'll see your non-operating revenue spiked up. That's be, that basically represents your federal revenue or federal grants that were being spent in the food service fund. And then at the bottom, we just have a summary of the other governmental funds as well. Any questions?
What was the capital contribution of one hundred and sixty-nine eight in twenty-twenty-one? What was that from? What was the source?
Usually that represent, usually what happens is the general fund will purchase an item that's to be used by the food service funds. I can't give you a specific, I can't tell you like, unless Nicole can.
So I'm ninety-nine percent sure that was when they did the elementary renovation and they bought new equipment, um, out of Monty.
So, yes, so, so what normally happens is because items purchased out of either, uh, construction fund, capital projects fund, or capital reserve funds, um, it has to be, but it's for food service. What happens is you have to report that in the food service fund as a capital contribution, so.
And then just to clarify, the non-operating revenue in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, the big dollars, seven hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand, that, those are, uh, federal?
Those are ju- the subsidies, yeah. So, so the operating revenues would just reflect, uh, the, the money you're collecting just from charging the meals. And then any money you're receiving as far as subsidies is being reported in non-operating revenue. So because, because of COVID and all the additional changes that were going on in the food service programs, schools are receiving more money because of that. Or some schools were, might have taken, say, an ESER grant and actually spent that out of the food service fund. So you can see an increase, um, because of that.
And those were one time. In other words, we cannot, um, plan for the, those kind of significant infusions of cash to continue?
For the ESER grants, yes. Yep.
If you remember last year, we had, it was free lunch and free breakfast for all students, and that's the direct impact.
Yeah.
I was just whispering to Mike, if you look at the June thirty, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two column versus the June thirty, two thousand nineteen, that's kind of your apples to apples or apples to oranges of fully operational without a disruption in the school year. And we pretty good that year. We celebrated, we made of twenty-five thousand that year. That was huge for us. And then you look at, we always said, as long as we can break even, right? We broke even. Now you look at last year when it was the government subsidized and what that meant. Almost three hundred thousand dollars net profit in that account, so.
Thank you, Uncle Sam.
Yep.
All right, uh moving on, uh any public comment relative to the agenda? Hearing none. Uh Board Direct Report, can I get a motion in a second?
So a couple of items under the Board of Directors report this evening. We have the accepting of the minutes from the last school board meeting on January ninth. Any corrections or adjustments that need to be made to those minutes? Okay, none being heard, we'll move on. Um, the next item is the approval of second reading of the policies. And we haven't received any updates or suggestions on those, so those will, if approved tonight, will stand and become permanent bo- board policies for the school district. And then we have first reading policies. There's four of them this evening. A lot of them have to do with records, uh record retention, rec- record destruction, electronic signature, signatures. Then one that's in there is the use of live stream video. All of these are periodic reviews uh with some minor wording changes, really nothing too significant to report on these. Again, just some minor changes that are on there. Any questions on the policies? The only other thing I'd like to just share, I know there's uh five board members that it's uh, the election terms are uh done this year. And so just wanted to share that the nomin- the nomination petition, uh the document where you have to get the signatures is now live and up on the website for the county, but you can't, so you can pull it off of there. Just make sure if you pull it off of there, you have to print it back to back. We printed it single and it actually states in the rules, you have to print it back to back. And then um the dates for that, you can start your first new signature February fourteenth. And then they're due March seventh. So that's the information we were able to pull out. Just want to make that reminder this evening for those board members. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Wagner.
All right, committee reports. Mrs. Hune, BCIU.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, the BCIU Board of Directors met on Thursday, January nineteenth. Um, I have a written report submitted, so um I imagine everyone has had um access to that. I did want to um recognize that in honor of School Director Recognition Month in January, the BCIU presented its sixth annual student artwork showcase. The theme was what makes my district unique. And um Mr. Cole Shook is the Brandywine Heights uh student whose arti- artistry was featured. I have links in uh the written documentation for access. There's a video there that features all eighteen school districts students' artwork. Um, so pretty neat stuff. Um, congratulations to those award winners. The other thing that I wanted to draw uh folks' attention to is on tonight's board meeting in the financial section, we're being asked to vote to approve what's called the mandated services budget at the BCIU. That's the piece that um that where the BCIU provides services to the school districts. For the past seven years, they have not increased um their, um the amount that they request each school district to contribute. Um, this, moving forward this next year, they are asking for a two point three seven percent increase. As it relates to Brandywine, the impact is about five hundred and thirty-five dollars or so. Let me get that number. Five, five hundred and uh twenty-four dollars, sorry. Um, so our total um contribution in the forthcoming year that we're being asked to vote on is twenty-two thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and forty-three cents. Two other just quick announcements, maybe Mr. Wagner and Mr. Potager, I don't know if you attended the annual board president superintendent's workshop, but perhaps you'll speak about that. And then the Committee on Legislative Action, Cola. Perhaps Mrs. Walliser uh in her committee report will be talking about that. That's coming up next on Tuesday, February twenty-first. And the next meeting of the BCIU Board of Directors will be scheduled for Thursday, Feb. sixteen. And that concludes my report unless there's comments or questions.
Thank you. Uh, give me one second. I'm gonna have to make a phone call here and add, uh Mrs. Walliser, her phone died out of uh, it ran out of power.
I can fill the time quickly. I did want to comment since I made a remark about the BCIU's recognition of school board um directors around the county. I did want to personally thank um the elementary school students who um, and thank you, Mrs. Kelly, for coordinating that. Who last month prepared all the cards and notes and posters and flyers for all of us. They were charming and delightful and they absolutely brought a smile to my face. I brought them home and um, of course, my family was very interested in seeing what I brought home from the school board. And we had a, a nice fun conversation and uh brought some, brought some joy. Um, and they appreciated reading about how the young kids value what we as a board put in in, in terms of hours and sacrifice. And um, so it certainly helped me on the home front to be able to share that. Thank you for that. And please pass our um gratitude on to the, to the youngsters. Thank you.
Mr. Sheets, BCTC.
BCTC met on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth at the East Campus. Uh, it was a virtual meeting um due to weather constraints. Uh, really the only thing to note is that we will be having um our annual budget coming out shortly. Uh, I believe, Mr. Potager, that you should have already received the presentation on that. Uh, however, that will be coming to the full board uh either later this month or right at the beginning of March. Next meeting is going to be held on February twenty-second at the West Campus. This concludes my report.
First Earned Income Tax Bureau Committee, Mr. Gorko.
Yeah, so I have nothing to report. The next meeting is March thirtieth.
Thank you. Cola, Mrs. Walliser.
Going to have to speak up. Just so Mrs. Hune hit, hit the next meeting is uh February twenty-first uh for, for the Cola meeting. So we are working on developing that presentation and agenda right now. Uh additionally connected to Cola, we are working to uh on the Board Superintendent's and Legislators' meeting. Uh, and we're gonna try to put that presentation since there's a lot of shift in the legislators that are in the, connected and representing the counties. Brandywine in particular has a, a lot of new representation. Uh, so we're going to do more of a history of the Cola organization as well as some of the priorities that as a county we've been focusing on. Particularly with uh special education funding, cyber charter school funding, uh and particularly school mandates, uh and then the impact of school mandates. So we're working on that right now with the BCIU, Dr. Miller and I from Fleetwood, uh to put that together. Policy Committee, you have the policies uh that are updated. We, we addressed those uh already.
Mrs. Eisenhardt, Strategic Planning and Goals.
Um, we will be covering that in the presentation.
Negotiations Committee, Mr. Sheets.
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. And Building Construction Committee.
So just a, an update with Building Construction Committee, we have, we've had a, a few meetings uh since our last time we were here together in January. We had uh Mr. Sellers out from Keystone and talked about the re-shift of a location priority from this building to the high school. Uh, and so we've had several meetings uh since that point with the Building Construction Committee at a high level. Uh, what we're looking at right now is to evaluate the use of the back of the L, of the high school uh to redo that field, to look to put us a track in. Uh, the nice part about that facility is there's already bathrooms and locker rooms that are available uh as well as a concession stand. Uh, the downside is, is there's no existing lights or light poles. And so we'll have to build that, which will add an additional expense to the project. Uh, so we're evaluating that. And then at this building, we haven't lost priority of some of the key things that have to be done, which is kind of creating that ADA platform at the top and taking care of the handrails. And so we're still uh have that as a priority. We have some dollars to put aside in the Capital Reserve Fund to, to address that. And then kind of a secondary goal with this building is, is there anything we can do with the track surface? As long as we don't exceed what is that footprint of the current track? That current track, even though it's cinders, is considered an, an impervious surface. So we could do something on top of that track and not uh trigger that DEP issue that we had before, which is what had us tri- look to a whole new cli- location. Because we would have been out of that one acre of disturbance. And so by sticking and just addressing the track alone, um, we can look to do something. That would not be a um competitive grade track. It would just be changing it from cinders to something more appropriate for our kids that are out there using it for different, different reasons, whether physical education or sports, as well as the community that use that space. So that's, that's the report right now for the, that space.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments on the board? Hearing none. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffner? Mr. Holland Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Rightnower?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets?
Yep.
Mr. Stupits?
Yes.
Mrs. Walliser?
Yeah.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Nine eighths, motion passes.
All right, Business and Operations Report, can I get a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, so for the Business and Operations Report, uh for items A through D, we have the bills list. Uh, we do have the general fund, the food service fund, construction fund and capital reserve fund. And then also when we get to item E, we do have the revenue and expenditure reports for the construction fund and capital reserve. Uh, there is a notation there that the general fund and food service fund for December will uh kind of be doubled up next month um with January in the March meeting. Uh, there are no budget transfers to report. Um, I do want to point to the investment schedule. Um, I guess on the bright side, we have hit a hundred thousand dollars in uh interest earnings this year, which is a po- positive news. Um, when looking at the last couple of years, you know, when we've budgeted about twenty-five thousand. So that's reassuring and also positive for next year's budget. Um, you can probably look around like two hundred thousand for that. Um, so moving on to item F, we have special education pupil services. We have to approve a letter of agreement with the Meadows Behavioral Health Center uh for services should we need them for next year and also two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year at a cost of seventy dollars a day. And again, this is, you know, should the need arise. We, we don't use them on an ongoing basis. Uh, item number two, uh is to approve a letter of agreement with Pennsylvania's Education for Children and Youth Experiencing Homelessness, uh Region Two. Uh, this is an entity that we essentially partner with and work with when it comes to instances of youth experiencing homelessness. And they assist us in providing, you know, the appropriate support to them. Uh, moving on to number three, uh this is to approve a revision to an existing contract with ESS. There are PARAs. It was originally approved at the December fifth board meeting to include the following pay scales. Uh, you'll see or uh on the original agreement, there was only T one and T two. Um, so this is essentially adding the T one and T two N L, which means no lunch. Uh, there's no change in cost essentially um due to the nature of the position these people work through lunch. Um, so it's really just updating their accounting codes to make it easier for them on the backend. And then moving on to curriculum and technology, item one, this is to approve the purchase of two hundred and ten wireless access points, licenses and hardware as part of the district planned cyclical network upgrades at a cost of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, this is eligible for E-rate reimbursement. We are category two, so we'll get about fifty-two thousand dollars reimbursed. So at the end of the day, our net cost will be about a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Cool. I'm, I'm not mistaken. I think that's like a five-year cycle for E-rate?
Uh, five years, yep. So moving on to facilities and maintenance, uh we are, we have completed the punch list. We are closing out the ISMS project finally. Um, so these are essentially all change order credits uh for BRC as well as JR Reynolds. Uh, so items A, B, C and D are credits due back from BRC essentially for work that was part of the scope of the project that was not completed. And then item E.
Just before you step on, I'm sorry. Um, just to interject there, we'll provide a more uh, an overview of the KCBA project and the whole change order. So you have a final uh outcome of that. At this point, um all the punch list items are complete. Uh, and we're now moved into what they call the warranty phase. So we have a one-year warranty for anything that would not work. So there's one or two items on the warranty list that we're already working with them, but pretty much the project is, is closed out at, at this point.
All right, so then item E is the change order for JR Reynolds. Essentially, when we, you know, bid out the project, there's an allowance section. Uh, we did not use all the allowances for the plumbing part. Uh, so we'll get that eleven thousand dollars in credit back. Uh, then item I, as Miss Hune mentioned earlier, we are asking you to approve the BCIU mandated services budget this evening. Uh, our portion would be twenty-two thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and forty-three cents. Uh, that is a two point three seven percent increase. For some who may or may not know, uh basically the formula is based on our ADMs and A ratios. That's how that's calculated. Uh, and then reference to the presentation earlier this evening, we are asking you to accept the twenty-one, twenty-two single audit report um as prepared by Gorman and Associates. And then last but not least, uh this is in reference to the purchase of the land from East Penn Manufacturing. We're asking you to approve this second amendment to the original agreement of sale. This is the eighteen point nine acres beside the high school. Um, essentially, there's no changes to the sales agreement itself. We're simply extending the deadline from March first to May thirtieth as we'll be closing this month. So that's what that is. So any questions?
All right, here, hearing no questions, could I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Wagner?
Oh.
I, I think we need, um, do we, well, I'll ask it. Do we need to do the BCIU mandated services budget as a separate line item? So that each individual members, board members' vote is tallied on that particular item or no? Can we group like we always do?
It's supposed to be a roll call.
I think, yeah.
Yep. It's on here as a roll call.
It appears their form requests that anyway. I don't know if it's required, but I guess what I'd like to do if it, if it's okay with everybody is separate that and just so that we can do an individual roll call on that one line item.
So then we'll need an amended emotion. Okay with that, amending your motion to vote on item I separately? So just to clarify, the first vote will be for everything in the agenda uh on business section, not including I. And then we'll do a second vote and that'll just be for item I.
All right, roll, roll call for all items except for I.
Mr. Hoffner?
Yes.
Mr. Holland Hill?
Yeah.
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Rightnower?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets?
Yep.
Mr. Stupits?
Yes.
Mrs. Walliser?
Yeah.
Mrs. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Nine eighths, motion passes.
All right, uh roll call for uh letter I, please.
Mr. Holland Hill? Mr. Holland Hill?
Yeah. Yeah.
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Rightnower?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets?
Yep.
Mr. Stupits?
Yes.
Mrs. Walliser?
Yeah.
Mrs. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffner?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Nine eighths, motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent's Report, can I get a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
All right, the floor is yours, Mr. Potager.
Okay, so. Couple items under the superintendent report. We have the uh mid-year goals uh and mid-year data review. If you don't mind, what I think I'll do is I'll go through all the items and we'll go back to the goals. Is that okay? We can kind of knock out the items. Um, so under superintendent report and the items, item A is for myself to attend the Pennsylvania Rural and Small Schools Conference. Uh, that is April twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth. That's the uh conference and the board that uh I am part of. Uh, so I'd ask if uh, if you wouldn't mind supporting me on that, I greatly appreciate that. Uh, item B is to approve an act eighty day. So what an act eighty day does is there's two requirements for students in Pennsylvania. One is that they have to do a hundred eighty days of instruction. And then the other is an hour requirement. So elementary students is nine hundred instructional hours and secondary students is nine hundred ninety instructional hours. What an act eighty day does is it allows you to waive the at hundred eighty day requirement. You still have to hit the nine hundred ninety hours, but you can do that in less days. But you can do that in less days. And so our graduating seniors this year. Quitstown, we use Quitstown University as our host for graduation. And they have opened up the facility for us on the Wednesday, uh, May thirty first. But the students' last day is Ju- is Thursday, June first. And so we'd use this act eighty day for that Thursday, the last day for all students. So all students would be going to school. K to eleven on Thursday, but our seniors would not. And so this act eighty day would would basically make up that. That day on that that Thursday. Does it make sense? Okay, so that's what that that's what that item is be. We need board approval on that before we can officially apply to the state for that act eighty day. And then we have a couple curricular items, uh, and then two clubs. Uh, I'll skip over those. I'm gonna come back to those. Uh, two clubs, we have, uh, you heard some of the students talking about this. It's a new club at the high school. It's a video club. It's a mental health and suicide awareness club, uh, and some some good traction and support from that, some neat connections uh with the kindness. Uh, commit kindness uh efforts that are happening there. And then, of course, we heard Tatiana and the excellent work she's done with the clothing drive. Here in the school district and giving back to the community. And so this is to officially acknowledge and. Uh, establish that that is a club so it can perpetually move forward after Tatiana graduates this year. Um, now, let me go back to C, D and E. That is the approval, the first reading of curriculum. Uh, that is our gifted and mathematics K to five as well as mathematics six to twelve. So just as a summary, as Mr. Farina joint steps up here, um. This is, uh, we have a six year cyclic curriculum cycle. Math is on our curriculum cycle process now. And Mr. Farina is not officially back, but officially back from uh paternity leave. Uh, they are happy new parents of a a young little boy. And so, uh, he came in, he's really done a lot of effort to. Put this curriculum in place this year. This is the first curriculum he has overseen in terms of the curriculum writing process. And so he wanted to come in and share a little bit with of the board about the highlights that are being recommended for the board in this curriculum process. So, Mr. Farina, I'll turn it over to you.
It's nice to speak to adults. Over the age of eight and uh weeks. Uh, so thank you again for giving this opportunity and I would be remiss without thanking uh Mrs. Kircher for all the work she did in this role previously. Uh, because the math and gifted uh curriculum rewrite occurred be- began uh under her watch. Uh, in about January, February of last year. So this is a full year process uh to go through all of our curriculum. Mrs. Kircher did a tremendous job getting this rolling, so I came in halfway to something that was already uh taking great strides. So. We are looking at our gifted curriculum from K to twelve and our mathematics curriculum K to twelve. Uh, and again, this isn't looking at individual resources or anything from a resource standpoint as far as textbooks. This is what we're going to um be teaching. When we look at, um, you know, I I want to highlight mainly or not mainly, but. First gifted, because I think gifted is a very interesting piece because we have uh new gifted staff uh throughout the district. One of the the big highlights when you look at K five is in fourth grade, uh, our fourth grade gifted students are doing a civics project. Uh, and I think this is something that is that experiential learning and, you know, as we look at our students becoming active citizens within the community. This is something that uh will kind of springboard that for our gifted education students, which will then be built upon uh in the later grades. When we look at sixth, seventh and eighth grade gifted, uh, one thing that is important to know, our sixth and seventh grade gifted classes do run together. So you are in a class as a sixth grader with sixth grader and seventh grade students and these curriculums do uh kind of pivot. So you may get this curriculum as a sixth grader and then as a seventh grader, or you might get the seventh grade curriculum first, depending on when you come into middle school. Uh, but there is a lot of overlap there and and what Mr. Harvey kind of building on that uh. Experiential learning of civics uh in fourth and fifth grade, there is what he calls his passion project. Uh, that students participate in sixth and seventh grade, where again, they're looking at something that is of high interest to them. Uh, and researching that. We've continued the work uh that Mrs. Kircher did when she was in the role as the gifted teacher, looking at mythology. Uh, as part of that sixth, seventh and eighth grade gifted cycle. Uh, and that one of, I think, one of the true highlights is something that Mr. Kabielnik has written into the eighth grade. Gifted curriculum where he's looking at having the students look at their giftedness. And what that means to be a gifted learner and and where their responsibilities lie is, you know, citizen as a member of our community and 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 where. They can become uh heavily involved. He's tackling the concept of neuroplasticity, which I think is a very interesting concept for our eighth graders, but. Again, looking at that, here is my brain, here's how my brain operates and how can I continue to grow that as I go through my formative years. Uh, at the high school level, uh, minor revisions, but one of the major revisions that uh Dr. Graham is looking at is in his seminar philosophy class. Which is being retitled as Monsters and Heroes. Uh, I assure you it is not a superheroes uh class. But it's basically kind of looking at through literature, through science, through community, through government. What we define as a monster, what we define as a hero, and a lot of times there's that duality of humankind. Uh, and looking at that, that kind of concept throughout a number of different modes. So that was a major rewrite uh in the uh. Basical gifted program. Switching over to math side, one of the highlights which uh we're very pleased to present tonight, I believe we're one of. Uh, a few school districts in the county who are moving forward uh in the initial year of this. Uh, there is now an A P precalculus course that is being offered. Uh, this came to our attention uh late summer, early fall. Uh, Mr. Tanis uh said this is something he would like to pursue and be interested in writing, so we were able to move forward with this class. Uh, one of I think the the really interesting things about the precalculus course is that you have students in tenth grade taking this class. And typically students in twelfth grade taking this class. And those are a lot of times students who are on different math trajectories. This, by offering the A P, one, it offers another A P course, but at the same time. Allows that to really look at students who are taking this course more out of interest in math versus students who want that uh A P experience. And to push their their math skills at a higher level. We typically schedule two sections of this per year. So having one regular uh precalculus and one A P precalculus fits in, uh, you know, our our current plan. Uh, and will be beneficial for our students. One of the other areas staying with the high school uh is there uh was. A decision to make a change from the consumer math course that was offered at the high school to switch to the fundamentals of higher math. This will continue to include consumer math concepts, but also have uh Algebra One skills written into the curriculum. This would then be a course that students who would take Algebra One may not have been successful on the Keystone. Could take this class prior to Algebra Two, get some of that Algebra One remediation prior to retaking the Keystone. As well as those consumer math skills. Uh, and at the middle level, uh, a rewrite of the accelerated sixth and seventh grade classes to ensure. Students who will be taking Algebra One uh as a seventh grader and an eighth grader. Are receiving not only those algebra skills, but the grade level content uh as well. So, uh. When you look at a student taking Algebra One in se- in seventh grade, in sixth grade, you want to prepare them for pre-algebra skills, but also make sure they have that solid foundation. In sixth grade math, something that has always uh been in place, but just a rewrite of that curriculum to ensure that all of those standards are hit. Uh, so again, obviously not going through all of the curriculums, but those are some of the highlights uh and changes that we've seen from previous curriculums that have gone through. You can answer any questions that anyone may have.
What'd you name the baby?
Uh, Owen Robert. Thank you. So that's an easy one. I can handle.
So, uh, moving on now to the uh mid-year goals report. In your packets or online, you should have a document that looks like this. It's a little bit different than our original goals document. We had it spread out in in this kind of fashion. Uh, and in such, we we try to elaborate and provide. An update writ in a written form of where we are with a evidence of goals that have been we've been working on as well as a status update. So just as a recap, there's five goal categories uh that are part of our process, enhancing communication, school pride. High quality instruction, safe and supportive learning environment, uh, increasing engagement and connections. And then the final, final one is uh enhancing district facilities and resources. So this document, it's it's nine pages. I'm not gonna read it word for word, but I just thought I'd give you a couple of quick highlights of things that we're working on. Uh, as a as a school district. Uh, our first goal under communication, we we have launched. The uh the website that's app based, uh, and we realized we needed to do a little bit more on the social media side. And so what we did is. We took each each uh school building and made communication teams that worked directly with the with the principal. And those communication teams or leaders work with the teachers. And so they're gathering the things that are happening in the classroom. They're going to those. Key team players that have access to the website and social media and then can push things out in the social media. So what I hope you're seeing now. Is on each, whether it's on the app or it's on the school district website, or it's on social media, Facebook or whichever site. That you're seeing more posts and more activity highlighting the things that are happening in their school district with the idea that there's great things happening. This is a wonderful opportunity to highlight and celebrate the our students and those activities. So that's our communication teams. Uh, we started an alumni hotspot, uh spotlight, and that's part of our district newsletter that goes out quarterly. And our first uh alumni highlighted was Ryan Hinkle. And so we're gonna be doing that quarterly and celebrating again the idea of. Uh, students being successful, leading us and having successful lives and let's celebrate a little bit of our history and kind of give our. Current students a little motivation of our of our alumni. Uh, signage is a uh big goal of ours this year. And so. There's a, this is a multi-tiered process, but the first one is to update some of the internal signage with our logo. Uh, vinyl si- vinyl sign clings. Uh, some, when we first rolled out the logo, there was a lot of things that were created, but some of them weren't as. Professional looking as we would have, uh, as we can get to now. And so we've been able to partner with a duck pun- bunch of different companies for the vinyl signs, kind of like what's on the. Podium there with all of our different branding uh packages that we have. And so we're working on doing some of those internally. And then externally, uh, by the end of the school year, you should see new signage throughout the school district of directional signs, parking signs. Uh, we realize as you come into the school district, particularly this building, it's hard to determine which location. Do I go around the back? Do I go to the auditorium entrance? Do I go to the front? So we're gonna look to update the signage, uh, make it uh customized brand line. Uh, make it more visual appealing. And then long term with this goal, this is multi-year, but long term with this goal, next year, we're looking to. Look to replace the sign at the high school with more of a digital sign. If you've never seen the high school sign, it's because it's in the worst location possible. Uh, it's in this weird. Like at the second entrance and you can't really see it. So we're hoping to uh more make that prominent for students, for the community driving by. And then though you're following that, we're looking to do some digital signage out front here as well. Uh, those are connected to the uh more long tra- long range capital plans, but that's our signage uh initiative there. Uh, connected with that is profile of a learner and that has been a big initiative for us. Uh, it started with our strategic planning process last spring, even winter, uh, continued through. And so profile of learner captures three things. What do we want a student to do academically? What are our academic expectations? Um, what are our interests that students have, whether that's internships or it's extracurriculars? Or it's the arts or it's athletics. Uh, and then third thing is what are those skills students need to be able to be successful? And that has taken on many terms, many manner uh manners in which that's presented over the course of years. But it's now classified as a profile of a graduate or we're calling a profile of a learner. And so a lot of work with the stakeholders has been done on that. Uh, we, as an admin team, have went and. Um, went through some conferences on this and just starting now to focus on that skills process where we've working with the B C I U right now to market that. To get that out to the community so they understand what we are trying to do uh and develop these. These three core tiers so that we can prepare our students to be successful, whether post-secondary education or heading into the workforce. So more to come on that, but uh some good work happening already this year on that one. And then, uh, we have character traits and we've talked about those, touched upon that with the kindness tree and really need to see our high school students. Working with our elementary and reciprocating that up to the high school with with two of the kindness trees going up there. Last month was cooperation. So again, just need to see a K to twelve continuum of focusing on these character traits and obviously what looks at, what something looks like at the elementary school looks a lot different at the high school. But just need to see character as an important aspect of our culture. Um, so that's, those are the key things that are happening under communication goal. Uh, again, a lot more in there. I'm trying to just hit some highlights, uh, high quality instruction. So. Key things here, and I'm just gonna briefly talk on this because we're gonna talk a little bit more and get data pieces here in a second. But we've real, we've reshifted a lot of our focus here this year with our reading specialists and our intervention specialists. So we always had reading specialists. And then with COVID and some extra dollars, we started to put together intervention specialists. Those focus on reading as well as math intervention. At, in conjunction with that, we started developing an M T S S model, which essentially is a tiered support system. For students if they're struggling. There's three tiers. One is more the classroom-based supports. The second one is more. Intervention specialist or reading specialist working with kids. And then the third one is really intense and that's one-on-one to with all with the goal of. Getting the student back up, getting what they need and kind of bolstering them up so they can get right back into the regular curriculum. Um, a lot of work is done on that. We put together a universal screener. Uh, and so what that is allows us to do is. In the past, we've already had reading specialists and they've been really good at working with students. Now we're shifting that. This universal screener is giving us. Skills that the students are having, that are struggling with. Before it was more classroom-based. What am I seeing as a teacher that the student is struggling with? Can you help this student because they're falling behind? Now it's targeting specific skills, what those skills are missing, and it's universal. All kindergarten students all the way through twelfth grade use this benchmark assessment. And then we can strategize, use that data, share those data points with the classroom teachers or the interventionist. And then pinpoint groups of students that are focused on a specific skill, give them that instruction. And get them back into the classroom as soon as possible. So. A different model and we're seeing some really good results from that that we'll share in a second. But in connection of why we're able to do that primarily at the secondary level. Is a lot of these other goals. We extended the length of the day at the high school and the in the middle school. It allows to put a win period in place at the high school, an extra thirty minutes where we can focus the instruction for the students. Uh, and then we also put in uh retesting uh policies, late work policies and extra credit policies. All with the idea, particularly with the retesting, that we want students to learn the content and that's the most important thing. So. If a student doesn't do well, they're have the opportunity to show that and prove that they have been able to. Do some kind of task to relearn the knowledge and then re- retake the assessment, the test or some other kind of project-based. Uh, assessment with the with the uh teacher. So that has gone really well. Some admittedly, a little bit of pushback of. Uh, we're being too lenient. Uh, why do students get a second chance? But I will reiterate the whole goal of that retesting policy. Is to make sure students have the opportunity to learn the knowledge. That's what it's all about. And so it's not about. Just, uh, they have a chance and if they fail, they have to redo it. No, it's about, we want our kids to know the knowledge and if they know the knowledge, it's scaffolding learning. If you know it, it's easier to take the next step and build upon it. So those are the huge instructional goals right now. Just right now, so raise your hand.
Is there a limit of one or how many kinds do you retest? How's that policy work?
One, one, one retest. Uh, and it's open for all students. If a student got a ninety four and they wanted to get a hundred percent. That student can, again, because the concept is we want students to learn the knowledge to the best of their ability. Um, safe and supportive learning grant uh environment. At the budget that was approved last year. There was two grants the district received. One was for mental health needs and the other one was for uh safety and security. So we're using. A hundred twenty thousand dollars for mental health to support a contracted social worker and counselor. Uh, and so that that person is supporting students primarily at the elementary and the high school levels. Uh, we also have Quitstown social, Quitstown University social worker interns that are working with our elementary students. Uh, that is, that is new this year and going really well to two different uh social worker interns working with us. Uh, and then we have the other grant dollars is a hundred twenty thousand dollars. And that's going to to put exterior door sensors on. And we've talked about that and board approved that, but. I essentially the idea is every external door throughout the district will have a sensor on it. And if it's left ajar purposely, like someone put a rock in so they can go outside and come back out or accidentally. That there'll be an alarm that goes off and you can see that. So those are the uh key things that are happening, a safe learning environment, um, en- engagement and connections. A lot of this focuses on things that we've done at the athletic department side with uh Mrs. Conrad now taking over as the as the athletic director. Uh, a lot of community initiatives, a lot of youth connection initiatives. And so you can see a host of things on here, but. Uh, for instance, last Friday night was Military Appreciation Night. We had a recruiter out. We highlighted a young girl that just signed on. To join the National Guard and uh we recognized her at halftime. Uh, there was a uh tragic fire that happened with a family and so we did a. A family fundraiser and at one of the sporting events this winter to raise a lot of money. So just a lot of neat things that are happening in terms of. Youth connections, bringing youth out, playing in the middle of half times for games, which brings grandparents and parents out to those games and. Again, creates that community feel within within the athletic world. So a lot of things in the engagement connection side connected to athletics and. I give uh Mrs. Conrad a lot of credit for reshaping that vision and putting those things in place. And then the last thing on that is the last block there and that's the Education Foundation that just uh got started. Uh, so it's in its infancy, infancy, but. Uh, some big impact it's already making. They started the uh free lunch Fridays and so far they've served over uh four thousand meals. Uh, through the course of the year. So really neat impact there. The next thing is, uh, they're. uh through the course of the year. So really neat impact there. The next thing is uh they're doing an eighties night fundraiser and that's gonna be in March. So if you haven't got your tickets yet, eighties night fundraiser coming up. Uh and again, the the goal behind Education Foundation, the purpose of that is that it raises funds to be able to augment and support the school district in financial places where otherwise maybe a program wouldn't be able to be supported or we're able to buy something, the Education Foundation to buy something that can augment and support the curriculum. So it goes right back to our students and our school district. Uh district facilities and resources, last section, uh new staff devices and student devices this year, and that was a huge transition and rollover. Uh we kind of forget about it because we're in the mix of it, but uh from a technology side, prepping all of those, making sure they're image, making sure they're ready to go is this uh as Mr. Volker shares, the smoothest start we've ever had in terms of our new device rollover and this is our third iteration of doing it now. Uh and went really, really well, almost flawlessly the start of the school year here. Uh we also have a new information management system. We've talked about this at length already, but uh Infinite Campus is our new SIS, Student Information Management System. There is a host of things, anything you can think of that's connected to the school district goes back to that SIS, whether it's report cards or it's parent apps or it's lunch process or it's transportation, uh the food service program, uh athletic registration. There is a host of different things that go connect this huge undertaking by Mr. Volker and the entire admin team as they've restructured schedules and report cards and everything. Um but that was a huge goal that happened primarily over the summer, but as we go through the course of the year now, all those things have to get re kind of initiated and and put in place as we kind of unfold another layer of the onion. So a lot of work and a huge initiative there. And then finally, you'll see their network switches uh and servers. That's a goal for us this year. We're in the process of bidding those. Uh those are six years old now, Mr. Volker. I think you shared with me. So they're starting to get to that, not end the lifecycle, but it's time to start looking at those. So network switches and servers, not not fancy, not glorious, not pretty, but definitely the backbone of our of our technology system. So that is a high level overview of the things that are going on. I know it took a little bit of time, but I appreciate you the board uh hearing, listening to that, uh allowing me to share a lot of the highlights that are happening. And for me, it's a great opportunity to to highlight the positives, to highlight all the work the admin team, the the support staff and the teachers are doing to make this district a better place. And I I'm really proud of the work we're doing here. So any questions on those before we take the next step? Okay, so I'm gonna switch gears a little bit. I'm gonna ask uh Carly and the principals to come up. We uh put together uh just a couple of slides here, but it's the mid-year data review. Uh and what we'd like to do is just as part of our universal screener process I talked about, that MTSS piece and our reading interventionist uh uh reading specialist and our interventionist, we also started doing data meetings. And we started that a couple of years ago, but really uh reinvigorated that this year and and kind of remarketed that with our principals. So they come and meet with as an admin team, uh Carly, Tom, uh Rob and myself. Uh and the each principal presents about their data, particularly with that universal screener that that um that we've been talking about. And so what we'd like to share with you, now each principal had about a hundred to a hundred fifty slides. So we're not gonna do a hundred to a hundred fifty slides, uh about three hour meeting. So what we will do though is just present a few slides. Uh these are really high level. It's obviously taking a summary of the summary of the summary, but just to make it kind of relevant. So you understand what what we're talking about here in terms of data and some of the results we're seeing with our benchmark data and the efforts of our teachers and intervention specialists and reading specialists, other things that are happening. So the format this evening will be um Carly's gonna emcee a little bit. Uh the principals are gonna talk a little bit about high level things that are happening in their building and the positives. Carly will go through the data and then principals will wrap up with some of the next steps they're gonna be working on. So I'll turn it over to you, Carly.
Alright, good evening. Uh Mr. Potager gave us a student production and kind of a overview of that this is a very high level presentation. Um at our building level teams, we look at every single grade level. We look at every teacher's classroom. We look at their different sections of classes that they might have. Even drill down into the specific student level of how is that student growing? What skills does that student need? Um for this purpose of the presentation, we're gonna look more so at the building level. So it will be high level. Um but please know that that is something that we do, not just with our teachers uh for the students that are in their classrooms, but also at our building level and our admin level as well. So this is our just kind of overview and agenda of this presentation. We're going to go through a high level of our instructional goals and then the same structure for each of our buildings. These instructional goals are the same ones that Mr. Potager just went over on that instructional goals sheet for our mid-year goals. Um our most important driving force behind this is that K through twelve intervention MTSS model that we've implemented this year. Um so again, kind of going back to last year, Mrs. Carter did a huge lift in putting together a formalized process for our intervention process. This year at the beginning of the year, we rolled that out to our teachers and implemented that into our classrooms. To make that happen, we had to shift some building schedules. So the elementary, the high school, they shifted their schedules a little bit to make sure that they had a specific time for intervention built into those schedules. What that does is it makes sure that there is at least thirty minutes for a block of intervention happening in all of our buildings. Uh we've also partnered with the BCIU to audit our math department. You guys heard from Dr. Hoyt earlier this year at one of our, I think it was our November board meeting. And in addition to looking at intervention, we've had some ESR-funded intervention positions that have been added to our staff over the last couple of years. We've purchased intervention resources to make sure that we have top-of-the-line research-based intervention programs. And we've also we have also standardized our grading practices um as Mr. Potiger highlighted with our retesting, our late work and extra credit po- policies. We're also currently investigating homework practices across the district. So a highlight of our intervention staffing, I wanted to go into this prior to hopping into our buildings. It looks a little bit different. Um obviously at the elementary, we wanna close those gaps before they get older. So our focus on intervention really is at that K through three building to make sure that when they're younger, they're sponges. So if we can close those gaps and those instructional pieces that they might be lacking at those younger ages, the more beneficial it's going to be. And hopefully we don't need as many interventions than as they're getting older. So at the elementary, we have five point five interventionists. One of those is ESR-funded. Uh the ISMS, we have three intervention interventionists and two of those are ESR-funded, one for each building. And at the high school, we have one interventionist that is ESR-funded and that kind of gives a breakdown of how they are split between ELA and math. Just a note at the bottom, those ESR funds right now are projected to end at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So just something to to note and keep in mind. So for this presentation, Ms. Potiger said, I'm going to partner with our principals. Even though it is a district level K through twelve intervention model, this is really something that yes, we have a hand in, but this is happening in our buildings on the ground with our teachers and our principals are are guiding that. And they are the players to make sure that this is happening in their buildings, in their classrooms that are going on day to day. So Ms. Kelly.
So we talk a lot about um the adults that have to uh that support the MTSS model, all the interventionists, but our students are really uh at at elementary who I want to uh celebrate here. They've transitioned fantastic into our MTSS model, rolling with the new programs that we have um and really showing what they're learning through our data. So I was excited to share that with our administration team. As Mr. Potiger and Ms. Warman suggested, we are we already shifted to the MTSS model. We've always had a system of support, safety net for our students. We called it SAT previously. So for those of you that have students that went through, if they ever went through SAT, very similar. This is just more formalized where we can very specifically say what tiered level they're on and what programs they're receiving and really track their growth that way. So this was really really interesting to see as we analyze the data from beginning of the year to mid-year, how we're seeing great success already. Um we added thirty minutes of intervention blocks to both reading and math. And what that means in the classroom is during that thirty minutes, when students may be pulled to see an interventionist for reading or math, there's no whole group instruction happening at that time. Each teacher is working in small groups, working on the specific skills that each child needs, whether it's enriching or remediating. There's nothing new occurring. So those students that are pulled out of instruction aren't missing anything and feeling like they need to to catch up even more. Um so that's something that's been really beneficial. We've had that uh before in reading, but it was loose based on the teacher of like sometimes they'll just catch them up later. Um but it's something that's very strict this year with the new schedule. It's a great time to roll it out. This is a non-negotiable time during target time. You're targeting skills. Um and reviewing the data with the teachers, they definitely see the benefit of that. Um and I review the data with the teachers individually. Um are one of our reading interventionists, Jen Snyder, who was recognized last month, um she's really helped this year analyze the data with me together and we sit together and uh meet with each teacher and talk about the universal screeners, the fast bridge data, what we see, what trends do we see, provide instructional recommendations, help them with grouping. And there's just a great dialogue of what's happening, not just with the universal screeners. What are you seeing in your classroom? Uh how are the intervention programs that we have supporting what you're doing in the classroom? What kinds of things can we buddy up of what we see are successful or what do we need to prob- uh problem solve or troubleshoot of what they're seeing isn't working? Uh at this point, we've had three individual meetings with every teacher, so three sets of meetings, I should say. Uh our next set of meeting will be uh in March, reviewing where they're at to see how we wanna close out the end of the year based on their a universal screener. Um so that's been really beneficial. Something new this year, uh we do have a math interventionist position. Uh we've always focused on the reading piece of it, but one of our interventionists is focusing on math this year. And uh we're seeing a great success with that. Um and also our new research-based intervention programs for both reading and math. We have new programs uh that are systematic. And really, the research base speaks for itself, is proven to work. Um and we're already seeing the success of that. So there's a lot at elementary to be proud of, a lot of shifts and the kids have rolled with all of it along with our our teachers too.
Thank you. So looking ahead a little bit at the high level data, starting with math at the elementary school, K one actually takes a different assessment since those learners um do best sharing their knowledge on a one-to-one basis. The the reading and math assessments are actually done one-to-one with their classroom teachers or an interventionist. So this assessment shows how are our kindergarten and first grade students growing in math. Our overall goal is to get those high-risk group to shrink a little bit. So we have less high-risk kids and see those students grow into either that some risk or that low risk category. So this kindergarten math data is exactly what we wanna see. That high risk is shrinking, some risk kind of stayed the same, but we were still still growing in that low risk category, which is exactly what we wanna see. So great data to look at for K one for math.
And and just also to interject briefly, again, keep in mind that this data that we're sharing is at the macro level. When we take a look at a more granular level, we see there's actually a significant difference between kindergarten and first grade. And we're able to drill down and have those individual conversations with the teachers that are having a lot of success and those that need additional growth. We're just being fully transparent with this macro level data with everybody because I think it does still tell the story. But just keep that in mind that we're able to get down a lot more.
And then looking at second and third grade for math, the assessment from second through twelfth grade breaks it into two categories. One, their math fluency, which is their computation and their facts. And their math application, which is their broad math skills. How are they applying their knowledge into problem solving? Uh geometry, data analysis, many different categories in math. So same thing with our trends. We're looking for that high risk to sh- to shrink, which we're seeing in both the computation fluency and that application. Um in computation, we're even seeing our some risk drop. And we've really seen a big gain in that low risk. Um our hope then especially with that computation is that you see that change then impact their math application. The quicker they are with their math fluency, their number sense, the better they're going to be able to apply that in terms of their math application. Um and we see that same following trend in the math application for second and third grade. Um something to note about the third grade class, they are projected to do fantastic on PSSAs. So Ms. Kelly has been pumping them up and their teachers. Um their growth has been fantastic in third grade. So again, as Mr. Volker said, this is a combined view of second and third grade, but when we really drill down into the different grade levels, the classes, the students, uh we're seeing very high projections with our third grade class. That's fantastic.
A quick question and maybe it's just my ability to process the data in the format it's presented, but um so what we're looking for is high risk to shrink. As the as the student um moves out of high risk, is it reasonable to expect them to traverse those four buckets to some risk and then move from some risk to low risk and then to advanced?
That would be the goal, yes. So our high-risk kiddos are the students that are flagged for the need needing the most intervention. So as we provide that intervention and fill those gaps, we hope that to see that maybe they go to, okay, now they're only displaying some risk. So not as big of a gap, still a gap, and that we we're still addressing with interventions. Um most of the times you might see a high-risk student go to that some risk, but then we're also trying to grow those some risk kids to the low risk and trying to grow those low-risk kids into advanced. So kind of that domino effect. Um but looking for again, that that drop from high risk is definitely our students who are displaying the largest gaps that we wanna make sure that we're closing at especially at the elementary school.
And Carly, you maybe we talked to it better than I get that each, we do this test three times a year. Each time we take the test, the test is the same, ratchets it up with the expectation of knowledge. So as you see the groups moving, that means they're moving at a pace that's similar to what the test is expecting. But if we're moving out of that group, that means they'll be moving their knowledge base even more. Does that make sense?
Yep. So depending on the student's growth, the student might be growing, but they might be staying in that risk category. That just means that they didn't grow enough to get to that next category. Uh what we really look for is student growth. So if a student is growing, no matter the rate, we celebrate that win. Uh we look at ways that how can we make them grow a little bit more to see if they can jump categories. Um but really, we're looking for consistent and continued growth with our students. Anytime that we see regression, those are specific student conversations and teacher conversations that we're having to see. Do they have their right intervention? Is there anything else that we can do to provide those supports for them?
So we want high-risk categories to shrink. So uh larger i- in the high-risk domain, more maroon shrinking to less gray. Okay. And then um as we see more and more gray on low risk and advanced, then that is to a reasonable explanation, expectation that that will translate to better performance on these standardized tests.
Yes.
Okay. I was I I looked at this data myself a alone and I I had you all said it was great growth and improvement and I'm looking at it going, I don't see that at all. So it it's very helpful to have the explanation go with the data. So thank you.
Absolutely. So looking at our reading data, um specifically still at the elementary, our kindergarten and first grade. Again, this is a combined group of K and one. Um when we look at, again, we want that high risk to drop a little bit. When we combine these two grade levels, we're not seeing that with our high risk, however, we saw that with our some risk. Uh and they're they're kind of moving up to that low risk, which is good. When we break this down a little bit further at the building level, we have a unique population in our first grade class. Um so our kindergarten growth models that drop in high risk and that rise in some risk and low risk. Um but our first grade class, we are seeing a little bit of a unique population. I'll let Ms. Kelly kind of jump in there for that one.
So our current first grade cohort came up as red flags of what's happening here that uh beginning of the year benchmark, lots of red gets flagged as red in our system because it's showing high risk. And when we look at um but you'll see it in the enrollment report, if you look at that population of students, they are forty-two percent plus a little uh for free and reduced. And we know that there is a correlation for those that are low SES to struggle a bit more um in school. So if this was separated, kindergarten would be on the perfect trajectory and first grade, not to our surprise, uh they're not making the gains as quickly as we would anticipate, but we're still seeing the growth. They're just not jumping the category. So kind of the K one combined kind of skews what we see individually. Uh we are seeing growth, but one of the things that was pointed out before, as we reach mid-year for the mid-year benchmarking, the skills that our first grade students are expected to know also increases. And they're they're still playing a little bit of catch-up and those that knowledge base is already increasing. They're showing that they're not getting to the next level category because they're still catching up from the first one, but they're growing, just not at the rate that we want. So in our next steps, I'll talk about what we're going to do to address that. And we're still, we're seeing success with the intervention and programs. We just need to amp up that.
How much of that could be contributed to the COVID period assignment?
It could, so COVID is still a question mark because we're seeing, I, I at least I feel like with our Lashbeer's elementary students, third grade, they performed very well in reading and math, number one in the county. Uh, our current third grade or current fourth grade, now to fourth grade. So where you would think that there would be a gap there, they, their scores were in line and typical with pre-COVID scores. And when we're looking at trends here, I'm not seeing a direct correlation to co- that we can blame necessarily on, on COVID just yet. There's still some skill deficits or things that were like, maybe when I think about phonics or speech, some of those masks, mask issues as they get to the older grade levels, that could be a gap with some of the pieces of the foundational skills. But with our current first grade group, I don't have the answers yet. We're still working that through. I don't believe that it's necessarily COVID, but it can be. Go back to what was our pre-ten experience like prior to coming into kindergarten? Did they have any of that exposure, uh, readiness skills for school?
Would that be, would that be just crazy and thinking that, you know, the third and fourth graders sort of were overrating kind of head start being in first and second grade and not coming home with COVID? And kindergarten, first grade and mid-second grade, you know, they had a little bit of a deficit.
I think as, it's tough as a whole, I'm, I'm talking to the admin team, right? I know, I'm tough with this because I start looking at individual students and I think like, no, this didn't affect these kids so to talk about it as a whole. I, it's really hard to generalize that. And I think COVID or not, we still are focusing on what we have and how we're going to move forward from that. And, and, and that's how we're gearing our, our next steps.
And I just to interject as well, I think we're, we're cautious to toss out any over-generalizations related to the impact of COVID. We know what we have is we have fantastic tools available, which is why it's so wonderful that we're able to, okay, we love every, every graph to look the exact right way. But it's so great that we have the ways to identify students that need the support. And then the ability to take somebody that may be traditionally working with kindergarten, say, I'm going to slide you over here because first grade is a greater need at this point in time. And we have that ability with the staffing and the tools and the resources to be able to adjust that and really be surgical with the intervention support that we're providing. So again, every graph does not look the exact way we want it to. But the fact that we have this information will enable us to get it moving in the right direction.
So looking at then at our second and third grade for reading, same thing from second through 12th grade, the test. Um, our universal screener breaks into two categories, that reading fluency and that reading application. So looking at second and third grade, again, this is a high-level building-wide. We're seeing a drop in our some risk, which is positive and a rise in our low risk. We do have some kiddos that grew a little bit more in that high-risk category for reading fluency that we're targeting interventions for specifically. And then for our application, we're seeing that kind of traditional pathway, which we want to see a drop in that low risk and a rise in those other categories.
Hi. So as we already alluded to, our first grade group being uh, uh, known as struggling more than the rest of the building at this point. Next year, we're going to uh, look at adjusting our schedule to get uh, potential more intervention blocks in place the way that we divided up. Uh, but also to have, right now, second grade has it in their schedule to get intervention in the afternoon. But our, one of our part-time interventionists is only here in the morning, so we're going to flip-flop those times. Um, looking at how we can best provide the maximum amount of intervention supports to help close those gaps for that cohort that uh, is flagged. Uh, we're also looking at special education interventions and supports. So once they move out of our tier-three supports that we see aren't successful, as successful as we would hope when they, if they end up qualifying for special education, what programming do we have in place? If our research-based intervention programs aren't showing successful, what special ed programs can we hope to close those gaps that we haven't been able to beat within the MTSS model? Um, continuation of support for mathematics department instructionally with Dr. Hoyt. Um, and just looking, reviewing our uh, curricular resources. Uh, at the elementary school, we do still conference with our students one-to-one. We show them how they're growing and celebrate their successes. It looks different at all levels, but that is something that our students do look forward to and are really proud of themselves when um, working with, whether it be the intervention teacher or the classroom teacher celebrating their growth. And then just continue those database instructional conversations. I think having the time to sit in the one-on-one with every teacher and go over what are the particulars of your class and individual students? And how can we best support you um, in helping each one of these students grow has been really beneficial. Um, so we'll be continuing with that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kelly. So a- as we look forward, um, I apologize that jumped ahead of a slide on me. Let's jump around. I know. I'm hitting back, but it's going like forward and back. Cause that's the end.
Let me just get the end. I hope you enjoyed the presentation. Here we go.
Okay, so taking a look at our intermediate and middle school, um, our stra- our strategic shifts that we've made so far is Mr. Pickens.
Thank you. Uh, so this MTSS model, one of the greatest things about it is that it provides a comprehensive framework that it, it guides us on the when and how to implement those supports. And it provides the tools and the time so that we can, so we can use those different strategies so that all of our students do continue to grow. Our interventionists in our building consist of three, three members. We have a great team of three members who could divide and conquer between the grades four through eight. We have one who focuses on the middle school, the grades four and five. And then another one who, who focuses on, on the higher grades, the seventh and eighth grade. And then the one in the middle who, who just split depending upon how many groups of students we have. It just maximizes the number of, the amount of support we can provide our students. And that the research-based intervention programs that we're using, the, to do the math, um, which focuses on the four basic concepts of math along with fractions and core numbers. Um, and the ninety-five percent group, which focuses on ELA skills, so we can fill those gaps with comprehension, um, vocabulary and, and multi-let, multi-syllable words. Uh, so with, with all those things in place, I, we're seeing some really good things. We're seeing our students move in the right direction. We are identifying some pockets of students that we're gonna, we're gonna focus a little bit more on to make sure that they are moving from one category to the next in the right direction.
So to take a look at our intermediate and middle school math growth. Um, again, this is a very high level. This is both of our buildings combined. So when we break it down um, at our building level, there are some specific grade levels or areas that we know that we're still working on to make sure that that growth is continuing to follow that trend that we want to see. We want to see that high risk drop a little bit. Um, we've seen it grow a little bit is that building level. But when we look at specific grade levels, uh, we're seeing that expected growth and that expected change. Uh, but when you put it all together, it kind of skews the data a little bit. Um, we are seeing more students in our advanced category overall for the building level, which is also something to celebrate uh, for that math fluency, that computation. Looking at the growth for more students in that low-risk category, less in that high risk, less in that some risk. Again, that should transfer over into that math application. So the more fluent students are with their computation and their number sense, that should transfer over into their application. Looking at the reading growth, again, both the fluency and the reading application, we're seeing less high-risk students. Um, and then our students are growing and jumping into different categories as well. Um, that reading fluency, we have more low-risk students. So those kiddos are coming out of the high-risk and the some-risk categories and continuing to grow with their rate of fluency. And then same thing, we're seeing that more low-risk and advanced students in that reading application across the middle school and intermediate school.
Can, I'm sorry, can you go back to that last slide just for a second? Did I, did I understand you to say that as you improve on fluency, you'll, your scores and application get better?
Yeah. So the, the assumption between fluency, both in math and reading, um, specific to reading in this case, is the more fluent a student is reading, the less time they're going to take trying to figure out the word that they're reading. And they're really looking at the comprehension. So if I'm able to read the passage fluently, I can look for the main idea, I can look at details. I can think about comprehension questions that I might be reading or asked to answer. However, if I'm less fluent, I'm going to be spending more time and focus on trying to read the words and make sense of the sentence that I'm reading. Um, so we, we look to increase that rate of fluency. Um, and then also hopefully see that transfer into that application of skills.
Okay. With that in mind, one of the things I noticed is the grids are not commensurate. So on the fluency side, it goes zero to eighty. And on the application side, you're at zero to forty, which says to me that the scores on the application side are dramatically lower. While when you look at it, they sort of look equal across, but they're not. The grids are totally different ratios. And so I guess my question is, is am I seeing that right? And if so, is that um, sort of normal? And how does that compare across districts? So at Brandywine, you know, we're at a basically two-to-one ratio. Is that typical for fluency versus application at these grade levels?
So another thing to note that's difference with the fluency and the application is the fluency assessment doesn't have an advanced category. They have a specific spot that they want them to get to. And once they hit that, they're still in that low-risk category. So if you're looking at that eighty percent of low-risk students, when you would look at our low-risk and advanced students on that application side, we'd be around that eighty percent of students. So kind of combining those two together, um, match up a little bit better when you're looking at the fluency because it doesn't have that other reporting category. Um, and you'll see that same thing when you kind of analyze the graphs a little bit with math as well. Um, because that fluency side doesn't have the advanced, they just have like the benchmark of where we want them to be.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for the question. Okay, so our next steps at the middle school and intermediate school.
All right. So next steps, we're looking at the schedule for next year because what we don't have at the intermediate school level is we don't have a common block of time for the teachers, for the intervention team to meet with all the students. It's, it's kind of a little bit of mishmash. We have times where they're meeting with the intermediate students during win time and they're splitting that win time. And then they're meeting with the students during recess time, they're splitting that time up. So the goal is to look at that schedule at the end of this school year. So next year coming in, we can hopefully have just a common block of time, similar to that what they have at the, at the elementary school, just to maximize the opportunities for those students to get that support. Um, moving on to the continuation of support with mathematics department. What we're doing is we're seeing some of those teachers who are, who are excelling and their students are growing. And we're, we're going to those teachers and the other teachers are saying, you know, what are they doing in their classrooms? What are they doing to make their kids successful and jumping from one category to the next? So we have them talking to one another, collaborating with one another, one another and scheduling walkthroughs. We have those teachers who are, who are having their students grow. They're going to go into those other, other classrooms and say, hey, these are the things that I'm noticing that maybe you could do a little bit different. And then vice versa, they're going to go into that teacher's classroom where those scores are, are growing. And they're going to say, wow, that's something that I never thought of. I'm going to take that back to my classroom and make a my own for my kiddos. So we have those, that, those, those teams working together so that those kids continue to grow. We continue that one-on-one conferencing. As our kids are older, they understand better. We actually can show them that visual of those, of their charts and say, listen, you're here and you moved up to here. And they celebrate that. They say, oh my gosh, I moved up. Or hey, guess what? You moved up two points or three points, two more points and you would have changed categories, right? So that, they celebrate that. Or some students on the other end say, oh my gosh, you know, I was tired that day. I didn't, I, I dropped a couple of points, but next time I'm going to, I'm going to give a full effort so I can move up another category and move up another two categories. So that one-on-one conferencing with the ELA teacher or the math teacher with those students, it, we're, we're, we're seeing a response there. And then the, the continued conversations between the intervention specialists and the team of teachers, making sure that we're identifying those pockets of students that are slipping or that are maybe not quite moving just enough. They're growing, but we want to see them jump categories. So we want to make sure that those students are put in the right groups and they're getting those specific interventions so that, so that we're, we're fixing those gaps. Okay? Thank you.
So moving on to the high school, I'll have Mr. Jenett come join me.
Got a raise a little bit. Hi, everybody. Um, at the high school level, one of the biggest challenges that we had is that uh, we needed to adopt the formalized sort of MTSS model. We um, are lucky enough to have Mrs. Conrad, our interventionist. Uh, but we've really only been able to utilize her for this school year. Because of staffing shortages before and different things, we've never really been able to get our intervention program truly supportive of our students and off the ground. So this year, uh, we had a really exciting opportunity to utilize her. And then also Mr. Ostrowski's background in data to kind of build those supports for our students. So as a program, it's something that we've really been able to coordinate and then begin. Uh, and then along with that big shift, then we were also uh, given the additional challenge of what was our schedule. Um, where we were adjusting that building schedule, we had additional time. The option became, what do we want to do with that additional time? Did we want to put it into specific courses, uh, into our periods? Or adjust our building schedule to kind of create an intervention model? Um, I'm an old coach and I love a good acronym, so I sat down and we thought about it. We came up with AIM, uh, which was for assistance, intervention and mentoring. Thought it was cool, kind of goes with the bullet thing, gives us something to do at the end of the day. Uh, and it also, because we have students nine through twelve, um, those students all have very different needs. We have transitioning freshman students, uh, that are going to need supports in their academics. Um, all the way through our senior students who'll be working on their graduation projects. So while keystones might not necessarily be their focus because they're in their twelfth grade, uh, our grade levels have different needs. Um, and this gives them an opportunity to work together as well. So at the end of every day, we incorporated this uh, thirty additional minutes of time that we could then utilize um, to provide assistance for our students. So what we've then been able to do is collaborate with departments. We've really been able to look at our data and again, myself, Mr. Ostrowski, Mrs. Conrad and all of our teachers have been able to look for sort of targeted supports to provide our students and then be able to deliver those uh, in a multitude of ways. Because when you think about it now, with thirty additional minutes at the end of every day, if you're going to a math intervention, you know, two to four times a week, you're getting an hour to, to sometimes almost two hours of additional support in a subject you might be struggling in, which is, which is definitely something we're, we're passionate about. Uh, it's also given us more of an opportunity to look at that data departmentally in our math department, in our ELA department. Uh, and even in those supporting departments as well that might not be keystone subjects like our history and social studies departments and see how we can support some of what's needed. Um, and then we've been able to utilize that intervention model to get uh, Mrs. Conrad as well to work with our students to identify some of their needs, see the data that's there and then really help provide them their support. Uh, in ELA and math primarily, but even with the uh, retesting as an option and some of the different supports that even students in our higher academic levels might need. This is a good opportunity for them to get help. So all of these kind of go into sort of our, our shifts and approach this year. And so far, we're really starting to see some of the positive benefits uh, of what's going into that additional time. It's been really beneficial.
Okay. And at the high school, we're going to talk a little bit about the intervention structure before we get into the data. Um, we had two specific focus areas. Um, that being a big one for us is that winter keystone for our math. Um, knowing that this is an area of focus for the district, we wanted to make sure that our students who were retesting for their keystone in winter were well-prepared. Some of these students might be sitting in a geometry class, they might be sitting in algebra two. Um, and they're a little bit far removed from algebra one. So during that AIM time, any student who was flagged to retake their winter keystone, um, they were placed into an AIM group and the focus was that algebra one instruction. So when you're looking at the fast bridge data and our universal screener data, doesn't necessarily correlate because if a student's sitting in geometry and they might have geometry gaps, we weren't focused on that. We were really trying to make sure that they were prepared for that winter retest, uh, which they did in January. And then for their, our fall and our shift into our winter groups, we're also focusing on those spring first-time test takers, who are current students who are focused and sitting in those algebra one classrooms, we want to make sure that they are best prepared for that spring assessment. Uh, for language arts, um, historically, we've had good success with our language arts keystone. So we were able to still focus on those specific instructional areas that were provided by FastBridge to make sure that we could close any gaps that we might be seeing. Uh, but those tenth graders who would be sitting for that keystone exam, um, we would be able to make sure that they would hit those areas through the FastBridge identified instructional areas because it's those grade level courses, whereas our math setup and structure of course flow is, varies. And it's not specifically by grade level, it's by the course that they're sitting in. I'm going to have Mr. Jenett to jump in here about our keystones really quick, um, and then the different pathways before we get into the data.
I was going to ju- I was going to jump in. I know, I want to come over the top and make sure it's by the mic just from there. Um, so just to get, as a keystone background, if you're taking an algebra keystone, there's several different grades that you could actually take that keystone in. You can start from seventh grade to sit for your algebra keystone in eighth grade. And then we have some freshman students all the way up through some juniors that are sitting for their algebra keystone just because of the way math levels shake out. So if you're a tenth grade student, you could be in one of about four or five different math courses depending on your strength in math, maybe interest, career paths, et cetera. Uh, the trigger courses for biology are in our tenth grade year, um, when you're Um when you're taking your biology courses, when you take your bio keystone, and then your literature keystone happens traditionally uh at the end of your tenth grade year as well, and your English and language art. So just as a keystone background, usually say you're sitting for two in your tenth grade year, literature and bio. And then when you finish your algebra courses, when you're sitting for your algebra keystone, just to give you an idea of when that is. Uh which means, when you look at the students, there are some times that we could have a freshman student who might have already taken the keystone two times by the time they even get into our building. If they took it as a seventh grader, as an eighth grader, uh seventh grader didn't pass, they might have retested in the eighth grade. And then by the time they get to the ninth grade, it could be the third time. So we really have to be careful. Uh it's kind of a philosophical approach on my part. We'll really look at a student now, we'll get those scores, we'll see where they're at. And if it looks like they could be close, we might encourage them to take it again. But if it looks like the keystones might not be uh the pathway that's gonna best suit them, then we'll adjust and we'll start to do something different. It's really dependent on the student, which is something that we're we're fortunate enough to be able to do because we're smaller. Uh so then at that point, once you take your keystones, um you're gonna get your scores back, and then you're gonna fall into one of what is five pathways. To give you just a really quick overview, because we've talked about them before, uh I'd like the students to know them as well. Kind of like to impress upon the students that I'd like them to know where they're at in terms of their keystone pathways all the time. The easiest route, you have to complete one of the pathways in order to graduate. So when I'm talking to the kids, I say, there's two people you have to make happy, right? There's the Brandywine Heights Area School District by passing your courses, getting your grades, doing your community service, uh that's mandatory for graduation. And then you have to make the state happy, which is by passing your keystones. In the event that you don't pass your keystones, uh there's a couple of different buckets then that our students can fall into. Um one is using composite scores, so if you sit for your keystone, uh they will add up the scores of your keystones. And if you hit a certain number, it'll check the box for your composite scores. So let's say you're not as strong in algebra, but you do great in lit and bio, you might be able to meet that pathway and you're at the finish line. So we do have a lot of students that actually can utilize that pathway because they might be stronger in some subjects than in others. Um there's a pathway for our students that attend BCTC. Uh at the end of BCTC, you sit for your NOCTI, your senior year. Uh and in the eleventh grade, you take pre-NOCTI, and based on your pre-NOCTI, they can determine whether or not you look as though you're gonna be able to meet um the requirements of your certification exam. NOCTIs are national level certs in your particular shop. So if it looks like a student is gonna meet their NOCTI uh requirements, they'll be eligible for their ACT one fifty-eight pathway. The box is checked regardless of keystone score. Um there's an alternate assessment pathway where if you take a different test, ACT, SAT, uh ASVAB, which is the the military exam, um and some different different kinds of assessments, if you do well enough on those, you can satisfy the requirements of your keystones having not passed them. Problem there is if you're not a good test taker and you're not doing, not showing success in your keystones, something like an ACT or an SAT might be a little bit more difficult. So that can be a little bit harder, but it does give us, it gives us the ability to tailor certain uh assessments to certain students. So you know, this year, we actually gave a large-scale administration of the ASVAB. It's the first time we've done that. That was kind of the military, the service exam. Not for those students that were gonna enter active service, but sometimes just knowing where they fall in that skill set helped gave them a pathway. And we actually got some students to their finish line utilizing that test, which was good. Um and then if the assessments, BCTC, keystone, and composite aren't necessarily uh going to work out, then there's one that's more artifact-based, and that's when our students have to do um some different items. Sometimes it's the completion of your community service project, uh gain admittance to a two-year, four-year university. Also gain a full-time employment afterwards, and if they can demonstrate those things, there's a list of artifacts that they can satisfy that we can then utilize as their pathway to graduation. So that's kind of how we approach every student, and then what I like to do is kind of make sure I continue. Anytime I need with the classes, we're talking about those, there's probably three to four times a year. I'll do the ACT one fifty-eight spiel for everybody in different in different sort of uh in settings there. And then most of my students now who are in their junior year know exactly kind of where they're gonna they're gonna fall into, which I think is important because then it helps us work with those students to help them meet their pathways. Because for me, although all of this is very important to me, satisfying the graduation requirements for both the state and us and getting our kids across the stage, that's my 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 utmost focus there, because that's gonna help them get to their next steps.
So looking at our data specifically to the high school, starting with math, um that math fluency and application again being separate, we're seeing that with our growth, we are seeing more advanced students, we're seeing more some risk students. But we're not seeing the drop that we'd like to see in our high-risk students. Again, just with our other buildings, we'd like to see that drop and not grow. Um and then looking at for our math fluency, we do have more summer students, so that's growing. Um but we're not seeing the trend that we would like specifically building-wise at the high school for math. Um looking at that question of like, well, why? Uh that was our first question. When we talked about the grouping and our structure of intervention, we really focused on that intervention for our algebra one retesters and our current algebra students. Our other students who were sitting in other courses like geometry and algebra two, they were getting intervention within their classrooms. Um and this represents all of our students at the high school that took that universal screener. So not just those students who were receiving intervention, um but all of those students that are in a math course at the high school. And then looking for our reading growth at the high school, um the reading fluency at the high school kind of fades out. At that point, we're looking for that application of skills. We're no longer focused on that rate of fluency. Um hoping that our students are fluent readers by that point in time, and are they able to apply those skills to what they're reading. Um we saw significant growth in our reading, so that drop in high risk and a huge drop in some risk and that growth in low risk and advanced. So again, when we look at, okay, well, what are we doing different between reading and math? Looking at the reading, and ELA teachers had an opportunity to look at the instructional recommendations from FastBridge and say, this these students needed vocabulary help, these students need comprehension help, and group them based on those instructional recommendations. Um again, reading is by a grade level, so they have a ninth grade English class, tenth grade, eleventh grade, and so on, uh where those skills are cumulative and continue on. So our next steps.
Uh so since we've seen the benefit of the time uh that we've been able to utilize this year, one of the big things I'd like to do now is uh approaching this, we kind of made a calculated decision that we were gonna have it at the end of the day because we have evaluated when our BCTC students leave in years past. And we have to make sure we get them their courses while they're in our building before they go. So one of the things I would like to see is kind of looking into our schedule and seeing if there's different times of day that we might be able to offer this time so that we can support our BCTC students. Because at this time, our assistance, intervention, and mentoring period is at the end of the day. So our BCTC students are not in the the building when it happens, they're in their programs. But like I said, going into it this year, we kind of knew that was gonna be one of the decisions that we had to make. And now looking at it and exploring kind of what might some of our options would be is a big piece that we'd like to continue to go forward with. Um we wanna make sure that we're continuing to support our our math teachers and our students instructionally. Uh I think as Mr. Farina spoke earlier, in terms of our approach to curriculum, we've identified some really, really, I think, strong ideas in how we can bolster some of the support that's available for our students as well as reinforcing some of the concepts that we think they need the most help with. Um we are starting to have those conversations with students where now we can we can have, uh because they're older too, have really good conversations with our kids about their data. What are they gonna utilize it for? What is their plan? What is their pathway? Because sometimes you are talking to students, and they know that they might not be the strongest algebra student, but they also know that they're gonna try. You know, I'm gonna try Mr. Jenit really hard on my literature and bio because I know, I know I could meet that pathway. Okay, you know, Mr. Jenit, I know I'm a terrible test taker. So for me, you know, what happens if this, if none of this works out? That takes some of that pressure off of them and kind of walk them through the pathways is big. We wanna make sure that we're conferencing with our students so they know what they're stand because uh know where they stand. Um we wanna make sure that we can implement that universal screener across all of our math classes. Again, if you're looking at ELA, ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade, is a little bit simpler sort of to to suss out than all of the different math options because you can be in a pre-algebra course all the way up through AP Calculus BC. So we wanna see kind of how that translates over to all of our math students to see where they're shaking out regardless of instructional level um or the academic level of their course. And then we just want to, as a staff, because we've seen such good conversations and department collaboration so far this year, uh focusing on this data is to just continue that. I mean, watching uh watching, you know, Mr. Ostrowski work with our ELA department while they develop some of the targeted supports for their students or sitting with our math department while they're kind of talking about some of the skills they wanna focus on, are things that are really gonna help kind of lay the groundwork for what what the students need.
Thank you. So that is a very high level of our mid-year data. Um one thing to note, as I was thinking, we're talking about keystones, that winter retest in January. We will get our scores um sometime in the beginning of March for those winter retests to see kind of how did that first semester of intervention at the high school specifically targeted on algebra one, how did that go? Um and then how did those targets for our our literature keystone retest as well, how did that go? And what was the kind of payoff and result of those keystones? So that will be something that, again, we can share after we get that data back in the beginning of March. Um any questions at this time?
So I'd like to stick over and thank everyone. I I know it's a little longer and took a little bit more of a form meeting, but um high-level data we talked about, but the the important piece to take away here is, this is an absolute priority for us. We put a lot of attention into it. Obviously, our building level leaders, Carly, Rob, are completely focused on this. Uh our, it it's translating down to our our intervention specialists, our reading specialists, our teachers working with these skills and and adjusting instruction. And then the students have seen that conferencing and they're overshadowed. So this is something we're completely focused on. It's it's really reshaping how we're doing it. And again, if you remember when I first started, we used to use interventionist to say, here's a classroom-based things that are happening, I'm seeing the struggle. And we tried to reiterate that. This is more now a very scripted, universal way that we evaluate all our students to see what, see where their struggles are and focus on those skills. Uh so it's a reshift, uh it's a reshift of resources, a reshift of how we're supporting students. Uh put a ton of emphasis on this year. Uh and so we know that academics, particularly mathematics, has been a struggle for us. But I want to reassure you that we are doing everything we can to put supports in place for our students, uh to be to make sure they're successful. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any additional questions or discussion?
Andrew, were you going to bring up what you put?
We'll do that very, that's very.
Didn't know where that fit in.
Thank you.
All right, should I get the roll call please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah.
Was it Eisenhower?
Yes.
Mr. Hapman?
Yeah.
Mr. Honsell?
Yeah.
Mr. Ryan?
Oh, yes. Sorry, Mrs. Ballizer, uh the phone call dropped off, that's why we not bothering you.
All right, personnel report. Can I get a motion in a second?
Thank you. Uh so a few items under the uh personnel report. We have a couple, a few resignations of winter athletics, one of them that two employees uh due to a uh termination situation there. Uh we have a uh change of assignment for Mr. Ben Kurtz. He is currently a courier, grounds and maintenance player. We're looking to shift him over into the custodial supervisor role to help uh managing our custodial staff, uh to, that should be a very uh good move for our staff and and the support for them. Uh in terms of uh the appointments, we have a few appointments this evening. The first one I'd like to mention is uh Mr. Spencer Ward. Uh Spencer's with us this evening. Uh he has joined us uh as uh we often talk about the uh, at the end replacement because she was such a longstanding uh figure and and a great leader for us uh for twenty-plus years here in the school district. But Spencer will be taking over that position as a supervisor of financial services. Uh and we're really excited for him to be joining us. He has a strong accounting background, particularly more forensic accounting. So that strong knowledge uh base is referenced in our terminal. We have a great partner with the Coleman Business Office team here, so welcome to the team, Spencer. Um we also have another appointment in the business office. It's uh Melissa, uh Mrs. Olivia Nar. Uh she has joined us as the business office specialist. If you remember last meeting, we talked about transportation food service role, and we were gonna move that over to athletics, and so it'd be transportation and athletics. And we were gonna drop the food service piece of it. So this position will be the business office specialist, taking up primarily the food service role down in the business office. So that's kind of the shift, the final shift of those positions. Uh after this uh takes effect February fifteenth, uh we'll be able to sw- switch uh Mrs. Kowalski over to the athletic department. Uh and then we have an appointment of uh Ms. Garcia. She will be our school nurse, the floating school nurse. If you remember, we approved a agreement with Chris Downs, Lee, but at Brandywine, that we rotate nurse. Uh so this is the hiring of Ms. Garcia. A lot of great candidates that came that applied for that position. Uh and Ms. Garcia rose to the top as a interview committee of all three school districts when she was candidate. Uh we have a a long-term sub uh position, uh that is Mrs. Jennifer Biondo. Uh she is filling in as a halftime Spanish, uh back to the little Mrs. Solenberger. And then uh also a point five floating sub. She was previously a learning support long-term sub for the whole year until this point. Uh and so she's really primarily helping with transitioning the learning support students uh as that transition to the other team from the back line. Uh we have revised uh winter athletic coach recommendation. We have a spring coach recommendation. Uh that's used in its fast approach, it is to wrap up the winter season and start the spring season in March. Uh and then we have uh athletic events staff and volunteer coaches. The only thing I'll point out of the spring athletic coaches is we are still in need of a track coach. Uh and so if anyone knows someone that's interested in coaching track, uh we are desperately in need of track coach. We have over seventy students combined with middle school and high school interested in the track program this year. So great numbers, we just need to coach. Uh so anyway, if you don't have any connections, please connect with Mrs. Conrad. Uh and then finally, um we have the approval of a nurse substitute, Mrs. Baker. Uh she is looking to substitute uh in the school district. She had worked with the school district in a uh outsourced type capacity role and was supporting us uh for for some time here, again the last year and beginning of this year. So we're excited to have her on as a substitute. Any personnel questions?
You're in one? Do I get a roll call please?
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mrs. Eisenhower?
Yes.
Mr. Hapman?
Yeah.
Mr. Honsell?
Yeah.
This is you?
Yes.
Yes.
So the only other thing I have under other business, I have two items I just wanted to share with the board. We did a uh independent weather survey to see how uh families wanted to how we're evaluating basically the mode of instruction during virtual winter days. I mean, the question was, do you wanna have a traditional snow day? Do you wanna have a full virtual day, or do you wanna have a half virtual day with the other half being more um support from from your teachers? And so uh that, the results were very evenly spread in terms of the distribution with six hundred thirty-eight responses. Uh thirty-one percent wanted a traditional snow day, twenty-one percent wanted a full virtual day, and a forty-six point two percent, so overwhelmingly, wanted the mix of a virtual half-day in the morning with the asynchronous support in the afternoon. So just good data point. Uh we've been working with a committee with the uh with the professional staff. And so we're working on that application to the state now uh for consideration for this coming year. So just wanted to give you that that update of those results. Uh the other thing I just wanted to bring out to to bring the attention to the board, this is kind of just to float the idea out there. But there are um several districts that are considering the idea of a two-hour delay this Monday after Super Bowl. Uh and it's a unique idea. I'm just kind of putting it out there. I I actually got a cute letter uh from a third-grade student uh that I went down and talked to her and she's, she is talking to me about the reasons why she wanted to have a two-hour delay. And I said, well, some people might not be Eagles fans, so they might not like that. And she said, well, we should tell them that um students learn better when they're well-rested, and we all may not be well-rested. So we need a two-hour delay to go well-rested. She just said that off the cuff, so smart little girl. Um but you know, in all seriousness, I kind of bring it to the board, you're the decision maker. For me, this isn't one that's obviously snow-related, so and I certainly don't wanna do something uh that it would be uh erosion any trust with the board by giving something kind of off the cuff like this, so.
We request that they move the game from Sunday to Saturday.
Saturday? I know, right? That would, or have Mother Nature just give us some snow like last Super Bowl, and then we call it the cancel.
Give a call, Andrew.
I know. So I, yeah, there's pros and cons to this, obviously, um people's schedules and uh family family lives on on the flip side. Uh I know probably those people will be watching the games, so I think, just looking for a little guidance on this one.
Any chance I get to sleep in, I'm all for it.
Would anyone like to take action on that?
Yeah, so at this point, I I've been closely monitoring it.
Saturday, I think it's supposed to snow.
Fifty degrees on me on uh.
Oh, I thought it was supposed to.
Do you, do you have a motion? We do have a motion on the floor for a two-hour delay on Monday. My motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second for a two-hour delay on this coming Monday of Super Bowl. Okay. Can I get a roll call?
Whoa, whoa, wait. Can we have some discussion, please? So have the folks who are advocating this thought about the impact on the moms and dads who work? So in a corporate environment, in a work environment, there's an expectation that employees show up despite the fact that the um, worker has been enjoying the Super Bowl the night before. So while we might be giving our kids a break, are we um, potentially really burdening the moms and dads who are expected to show up and who's gonna watch their kiddos for those first two hours? And will they get penalized when they show up to their employer two hours late for no weather delay, no sickness issue? Just because their school shut down for two hours? So that's kind of the first issue. The second issue I would suggest is that um, while it, perhaps if you're an Eagles fan, it would be fabulous to think that the Eagles could get into this position year after year after year. Um, to me, there's an issue of precedent setting. Um, I'm not sure that um, even if a case is really well-articulated by a youngster or a staff member. That we should change our protocol across the district without some very serious consideration. Because the next issue that pops up might not be the Super Bowl. It might be some other um, protest event or some other theater production or some other, you name it. I mean, our athletes are expected when they play uh, to show up the next day. We've had athletes um, playing in districts across the state in Pittsburgh, if I'm not mistaken. Um, you know, over the years and.
But if they don't, are they penalized for it? What does that mean? But if they, if they don't show up, I've had, growing up, sports and we're out late and I just went in late the next day. Nobody ever really cared much.
Well, with that, if the expectation is that you show up to school on time when school is there, then I think that's from a board perspective, what we should promote. If individual moms and dads want to let their kids sleep in. Then by all means, make that decision as a parent, but don't dictate that across the district for every parent. So that's, that's, I, I just encourage us to ask those questions um, before we so quickly take uh, a vote on a serious matter such as this.
Wait, wait. What is the historical um, absenteeism from the day after the Super Bowl involved students? And.
I don't know the answer. The answer I can tell you is that last time we had this situation, uh, it actually snowed. Or was calling for snow that night. So I did a two-hour delay during halftime, Sunday night. And then Monday morning, we actually canceled because of that snow. Well, so I don't know what the.
Weather, the weather, that's what I said. Snow is Mother Nature.
Be wonderful.
We're at the, we're at the only school that's, there's other schools that are doing this around here as well.
Can you share that data?
They just, was it Quakertown? Quakertown, they were just on the news. They, the, the whole news was in the school. And the kids were cheering and it was, everyone was very excited.
Are there any other schools in Berks County that have approved?
Conversations that were happening amongst the superintendents, uh, no one has committed. Uh, there's a couple that were considering it. Several that were no and others that were considered.
And is it no based on the superintendent's position or that there's been board discussion? Yeah. Well, I mean, if we take a vote, we take a vote, but my position would be that it's a family matter. That if the individual third grader um, has a great idea and wants to miss school the next morning, then she needs to make that same really strong argument to her mom and dad or guardians. Um, likewise for anybody, you know, faculty staff, we have generous vacation for our administrators and our teachers. Um, they're encouraged and authorized. They're entitled to take days off when they feel like they need a mental health day or any other sickness or vacation. So my position would be um, not in favor of this.
All valid points. Um, we do have a motion in a second on the table. So we do need to take a roll call vote.
Mr. Heath?
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens?
No.
Mrs. Ismer?
Yes.
Mr. Hapner?
I'm staying. We both, you can change the votes.
Mr. Honcho?
No.
Is this here?
No.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Three As, three A's, one.
Mr. Wright.
Always a bridesmaid, never a bride. Uh, no.
Uh, four As, three As, one of such. Both of those knock down.
So, everyone, pray for some. There we go.
It's your option. The option, Mrs. Stevens, is absolutely right. The option is if the parent doesn't mind the child sleeping in an extra couple hours, that'd be drag her to school the rest of, the rest of that, true? That's fine. Or then again, some people just eat too much pizza and they get sick for it. So there are other options. Whether we like it or not.
Yeah. I said there's pros and cons.
Yeah.
Sir, any uh, additional comments from public?
I got a question on a separate matter. I believe I read an email a couple of weeks ago about a athlete that got hurt. And their parents were asking us to take care of the medical bills. Did anything come with that?
So if uh, a student gets hurt, whether it's an athlete or it, or a student gets injured within the school setting. Um, through the, Mr. Pratt, I'll ask you to step in here if I, I misspoke in any way. Um, then in the school code essentially, the, the school is protected. Uh, and so we are not liable unless there is gross negligence. Uh, and so if there was something wrong with equipment or there was something that was in the facility that caused that accident. Uh, then, then that would prompt the insurance claim. But for the most part, uh, there is not something that this district would be held liable in terms of a insurance claim for a student accident. Is that correct?
Correct. Did they come to the school thinking that we weren't liable or were?
That was the question.
Oh, okay. They weren't specifically asking for like help because of financial problems or anything like that?
They, the, the root of the question was, is, does the district insurance cover any of this uh, issue?
Okay.
But that, just through your knowledge and if anyone ever asks about that, uh, and that question has come up in the past to board members or to myself with business office insurance company. Uh, and we did reach out to the insurance company and um, while they don't have like a stocked answer. Um, that we did do our due diligence, investigated and that my, my assumption was correct and I just wanted to validate that.
Cause I wasn't sure if someone, like an athlete just got hurt and inflation truly hurt in the middle-class people, I'd say. Maybe they were coming, asking us to help them out. But I guess that wasn't the scenario.
Yeah. And even if they are really, we can't draw this line there. It has to be, here's what you, here's the, here's how it was, it works.
So to um, clarify and follow up. My understanding is that um, those note cards, I don't know, they're probably online these days. So I'm, I'm dating myself. Um, for athletes to sign up and register for athletic programs. Does, do those not require the family to provide health insurance information for each individual athlete?
Um. Sarah, do you?
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. So I think that's also part of the messaging. That if we were ever asked, the message is that when you signed your child up, P A, P I double A required us to ensure that you honorably filled out that form and that you have health coverage for your athlete, your student athlete. So there really shouldn't be a question where we would be asked uh, unless there was an initial claim of negligence. But if there's no claim of negligence, we shouldn't be put in that situation, if I understand correctly.
Any other questions, comments? There are none. Do I get a motion to move here? So move. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.